Monday, January twenty second, two thousand and twenty four, our business meeting of the Board of School of Directors. We will begin our meeting with our superintendent report, Dr. B. Coats. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. We have to do salute to the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not only a different.
Please salute to the fact.
It was a constitution. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we can move on to our superintendent superintendent's report by Dr. B. Coats.
Roll call.
Oh, I.
You're in Ms. Ivory's defense.
Agenda does not read. The agenda does not include that, so I'm following the agenda. So I do apologize.
No, I'm looking at the same one you are, Ms. Ivory.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman, can you do roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Hoff.
Present.
Mr. Wright here. Miss Richardson.
Present.
Ms. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Tom.
Present.
Mr. Callahan here. Ms. K. Henry.
Present.
Ms. Ivory.
Present.
Ms. Boykins.
Okay, Ms. Ivory, if you don't have any comments, then I can proceed.
Yes, please do. Thank you, Dr. B. Coats.
Sure. Problem at all. Good evening, everyone. I do have some leave comments I want to share tonight. What members you will understand why I did not have what it's worth by the end of the hour before. So good evening, everyone. Do you have a few things I want to share this evening? A special thanks, and then we have a few district and community announcements. So I had the opportunity to work with the Pinewood High School students on January fifteenth. They assembled hygiene bags for the Rats Athletes pantry, and it benefits our high school students who participate in after-school activities. It was a very well-attended event. I do want to thank Mr. Cuff, who is a social worker. At the secondary level, he is doing some great things with our students and for the larger community. So I just want to thank him for his efforts and thank the students that participated in that day of service activity. Also, again, we have significant donations from Donors Shoes. You will see the schools and teachers who are benefiting from this, and just want to thank Donors Shoes for continuing to support the William Penn School District. A few announcements. We are having our second set of sessions in relationship to school safety. And they will be this Saturday, January the twenty seventh, at eleven o'clock, at Pinewood Middle Schools. And we will also have one on Monday, January the twenty ninth, at six P. M. I am encouraging all family members, the parents and students, to please come out. We do want to hear what you have to say. We also want to provide you with some updates since our last community conversations were held. I believe they were at the end of October. So this is our way of making sure that we are staying in communication with our community, sharing information, and also addressing concerns, issues, and also getting some thoughts and ideas about how we move forward. So if you can come out, I would greatly appreciate that. We also will be celebrating and recognizing students as a part of the National High School Art Exhibition. It will be held this Wednesday, January the twenty fourth. Specifically, that's when they will provide awards for students at five P. M. So if you can make it, please come out and support our students who will be participating in this. You can see various students' names are listed here, who are actually a part of the art exhibition. And I really want to highlight this one, the Little Shop of Cars. I'm not sure how many of you participated in the state of schools, but we got a little taste of a little shop of cars, and we have some really, really talented young people in our district. So the Pinewood High School Musical will be February eighth, ninth, and tenth, seven o'clock P. M. on the eighth and ninth, and six o'clock P. M. on the tenth. You can see the price of tickets, ten dollars in advance and twelve dollars at the door. And I do want to recognize one of our school board student members, Ms. Askew Green, who was also in the Little Shop of Cars and did a fantastic job our state of the school. So please come out and support our local people. It's been two years since I participated in the Polar Plunge, and whoever wants to come back out and take a plunge.
Are you doing it?
February the ninth, two thousand and twenty four. It's for a great cause and proceeds go a great, go a long way, and it supports the Pennsylvania Special Olympics. So you can definitely take the plunge. You can also contribute to this great cause because we also are raising funds to support our students. Also, we want to support the Pinewood Foundation. You can see that there are two activities that you can participate in. Dress Down Day, which is Friday, February the sixteenth. It's one dollar for students and five dollars for staff members. All of this money goes to support our students and our district. So if you can participate, please do so. And lastly, this is Board Member Appreciation Month. And I do want to take a moment to just say thank you to our board members. Tonight, we actually pause. We pause to appreciate your dedication to the students, the staff, and the families of our district. Your time and your effort does not go unnoticed. I personally thank you for your support and ability for us to review initiatives from unique positions, realizing a decision that ultimately benefits our students. And I appreciate being a part of the team of ten. So congratulations and thank you to our board members, and we also have something that we want to provide you with just as a way to say thank you for your support of our district. And those bags are coming to you now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciate what you all do.
Thank you.
I'm so proud of you.
That's right. It's all good.
All my money.
Dr. B. Coats.
Thank you.
You know, I can't give one. I want to be most. How can I? I will follow up with you.
Yeah, everybody's mother.
I can't that day. And Ms. Hopkins and Ms. Ivory, we will make sure that you get your bag.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You sending that FedEx delivery tomorrow morning, bright early?
All right, Ms. Ivory, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you for the update, Dr. B. Coats. Can I have an approval of the agenda, a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the business meeting?
Ms. Ivory, we have to call the vote on the motion.
I'm sorry. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you mean from the.
Are those against? Motion pass. Okay. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes of the business meeting held on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty three. There a second?
The second?
I can't say.
I wouldn't have been there.
You read the memo.
All right, a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes. Next, we're going to have remarks by our student representatives, beginning with our twelfth grade, Mr. Mohammed Bangoura.
Ms. Ivory, we have one more set of minutes to approve.
Committee meeting of the whole.
Oh, I apologize. Yes. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the committee meeting of the whole, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ah.
Those against? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Khan. Now we will continue with our remarks by our student representatives, Mr. Mohammed Bangoura, our twelfth grade representative.
And he's not in person tonight. Ms. Ivory, Ms. Askew Green is here, and J. Lo Wise is on.
Okay, so next we'll go to our eleventh grade representative, Ms. J. Lo Wise. You have the floor, Ms. Wise. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry I was a little late. I just kind, it slipped my mind that I had to go on tonight. But from what I know, I mostly talked to Ms. Pardini about this, and we really don't have any issues or concerns right at the moment for the eleventh grade class. I do want to say we did go on our trip to main event on the eighteenth, which was really fun. And a lot of the eleventh graders who went had a fun time. But other than that, there's nothing else to really report from them.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. I'm glad you you guys were able to have a class trip, and I'm glad that you do not have anything. But hopefully we'll hear some of the positive things that are also going on. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. So we're next going to move on to our tenth grade representative, Ms. Morgan Askew Green. Good evening.
Holy.
Hi, similar to J. Lo, I don't have really anything negative to report. Everything's mostly been positive right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Askew Green. That is great news.
And Eli Favors also not here this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we will continue moving to our, there are no special awards for this evening. We're going to go to our public comments on agenda items. Are there any?
On agenda items, there is a young lady who has her hand raised. Can you comment states and come to the podium, please, to state your name and your role? And the mic should be on so we can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Sheila A. Father, and I am here as a representative for your state representative, Kevin Boyd. She had me come this morning because she was unable to be here, but she wanted to recognize your school board because she understands the important work that you all do. And as you probably know, she is a former school board director herself, so she truly understands the work. And I'm also a former school board director. So we wanted to, she wanted to make sure that I came today to offer you our gratitude for the work that you do and also let you know, please keep up the good work. It was nice to hear the students say they didn't have any issue. I can't say that. You guys must be doing a good job. So she said, thank you for all that you do. I'm not sure we can direct of things. Can I just give a?
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Are there any additional public comments?
Come on up.
Is that Miss Machenda? Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Ivory.
Good evening.
I see one here that Mr. Carpenter wants to be there just a first of all. So who's taking his place at the library? We not have nobody ready for this right now.
That position will be filled once we identify the appropriate candidate.
All right, I got some other stuff to read ahead. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
It was difficult to hear her. Could you just repeat her question, please?
I'm sorry, Ms. Hopkins.
Who's to be, Mr. Carpenter?
She was asking.
Go ahead on our birthday.
She was asking who was going to replace Mr. Carpenter and Walna because he's still.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Do we have any additional public comments on the on agenda items? I do not see any in the chat.
I do not. Yes. We have a hand raised. Ms. Commodore, I think you can speak now.
Thank you so very much. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I wanted to discuss the matter of Ms. Elmore's position of that being filled at the Pinewood Middle School. Ms. Elmore went out on a very blessed moment of having a beautiful child, and we wish her congratulations. However, her position has still not been filled. And apparently, the position of the attendance secretary position has now been temporarily filled. But the guidance position should have been filled first because Ms. Elmore was out before Ms. Mosley just recently left.
Thank you, Ms. Commodore.
Thank you.
Ms. Ivory, I do not see, I'm sorry, Jennifer Plum.
Yes.
Has our hand raised?
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have the floor.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity and to express our gratitude to each of you, school board members, for the dedication that you have to our students, parents, and community within our school district. Your efforts and advocacy do not go unnoticed, and we know how much, please know how much you are valued. May your ongoing contributions continue to shape a promising future for our school district. In addition, we would also like to take the opportunity to extend our deep appreciation to Jen Hoff, our dedicated school board director in Region Seven. Jennifer, your support and commitment to fostering positive communication between parents and the schools is truly commendable. Your tireless effort in ensuring effective communication and collaboration has created an environment where parents feel both valued and supported in their crucial roles in their children's education. Your genuine understanding of parents' concerns, combined with your consistent work towards constructive solutions, has built trust and unity within our school community. Your willingness to listen has nurtured a strong bond between the parents and school. On behalf of a bunch of parents, we extend our sincerest thanks for your outstanding service, and your contributions have left significant impacts on our children's lives and the overall well-being of our school community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Plum.
Thank you, Ms. Plum, for that.
Ms. Ivory, I did not see any other hands in the chat, and there are no hands here in person.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to continue to our communications with Mr. Kaufman. There are none. My apologies. Oh, wait, you do have.
Yes, at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now we're going to begin our committee reports, beginning with our Community Relations Committee. Ms. Boykins is the chair. And I will read that for her. A one, Black History Month Proclamation. And I will read this. Whereas in the year nineteen twenty six, Mr. Carter G. Woodson, Black historian and founder of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History in American Life, proposed Black History Week. And whereas Black History Month was established in nineteen seventy six, is sponsored by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, and is observed the entire month of February. The ASALH has selected the twenty twenty four Black History theme as African-Americans and the arts. This theme acknowledges and celebrates the many impacts Black Americans have had on visual arts, music, cultural movements, and more. And whereas, in order to carry on the tradition, Mr. Woodson began, Black History Month is observed to inform and educate people about the history of African-American men and women and the contributions they have made to American life and culture. The yearly themes reflect changes in how people of African descent in the United States have viewed themselves, the influences of social movements, and the historical importance of race relations in America. Classroom lessons in the schools of the William Penn School District will commemorate the study of African-American life and history. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of the William Penn School District hereby proclaim the month of February as Black History Month for the year two thousand and twenty four. A two, kindergarten pre-registration for the two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five school year. And the list of requirements are included below. A three, Little Shop of Cars at Pinewood High School. I'll just reiterate, please support on February eighth and ninth at seven P. M. And February tenth at three P. M. at the Pinewood High School. Tickets are ten dollars in advance and the link below, or twelve dollars at the door. Please, please support our students. And that concludes our report for Community Relations.
So moved. Second.
Yeah. For the first one, the resolution requires a motion. Yeah.
Okay.
General move.
Do you have a second? All right. Resolution passes?
We need. Here you go.
Aye, thank you. All right, our next committee is our Education Committee, Ms. Valerie Cook Henry.
Good evening, everyone. The Education Committee Agenda Release, V one, Release and Settlement Agreement. And the motion is to approve the release and settlement agreement negotiated between the William Penn School District and the parents of students as indicated below. V two, expulsion waiver. And the motion is the following reference students are recommended for expulsion and subsequent placement in personalized learning community. The expulsion timeframe for the two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four school term is detailed. If the student has not already successfully graduated from the school district, information detailing the reason is on file at Student Service Office. V three, school field trip. And the motion is to approve the various student field trips to destinations that are thirty miles away or more. And I'll read with more detail. Ms. Cox, principal of Pinewood Middle School, requests permission for one hundred and thirty seventh graders, one hundred and thirty eighth graders, and forty adults to visit Blue Mountain Ski Resort located at sixteen sixty Blue Mountain Drive, Palmetto, PA, February the eighth through the ninth. And this provides students an opportunity to practice their social and emotional skills while experiencing snow tubing and learning the science in physics behind centrical forces, gravity, weather, and velocity. The cost is seventy dollars, the eighty dollars per student, and chaperone depending on the activity cost. And last is V four, and it is a motion to approve the contractual agreement with Cardinal Point Security Group to enhance overall student school day at Pinewood High School. I'll read more about Cardinal Point Security Group. They will provide support to Pinewood High School from January the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four to June twelfth, two thousand and twenty four, for the amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The company has thirty years of experience providing comprehensive safety support to schools encompassing physical safety, positive climate, effective professional development. Four safety officers will be stationed at Pinewood High School from six forty five A. M. to two forty five P. M. They will assist the school's security staff in expediting morning entry, safety patrols in hallways during class, in classroom, transitions, lunchroom coverage, and support, and school dismissal. In addition, they will provide security support at athletic events and after-school events as needed. That concludes my reading.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any question? Oh, do we have any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. All right. It says here they're unarmed, but is there any talk that they'll ever be armed security? Thank you.
Yeah. Just is this going to enhance or to replace? Are you still looking at hiring a security officer? At this point, we are not.
Okay. Ms. Happens?
Yeah, I have one on page seven, B three, regarding the field trip. I think for me is, I want to ask a question that has to do with funding. So how were the children's field trip funded? Was it private funding, or did the school district fund it?
I would have to defer to Ms. Stewart on that one. Can you come to the mic?
Oh. Good evening, everyone. My name is Danielle Stewart. I'm the executive director of Student Services. As the resolution says, the students paid seventy to eighty dollars a piece, depending on the activity that they will be doing. The school also fundraised as well to supply the cost for the trip.
So that wasn't really my real question. So my real question is, is was there funding enough for all the students to attend? And if not, were there any students that were not funded but were deserving to go? That's the good question.
Answer for, but I would be able to follow up with the principal to get an answer on that.
And if you would follow up with me, letting me know, because if there is a student that is deserving, I would like to fund that student to go.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that offer. I will let her go about it.
Thank you.
It's an overnight trip? I'm sorry. No, sorry. So they're going two days, I guess, seventh grader.
Two different grades are going. So seventh one, when they age their voice.
Got it. I was hoping it wasn't over.
Thank you. Ms. Hoff, did you have another question or comment?
I just though wanted to. It was so the extra guards are for extras and in case we have people help. That's what the is packets.
Yes.
I just wanted to clear it up for Mr. K.
Okay, does anyone else have any additional questions? Okay, can we have a motion? We made a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? All right, motions pass.
Ms. Ivory, I do. So if if there is a student or two that needs assistance, Mr. Khan, do we have to amend that motion because since they put a number in there?
No, you weren't actually, this motion was not authorizing the expenditure of school district funds. This motion was simply authorizing, because your board policy requires it, the field trip that's more than thirty miles away. That's all it was doing. So you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Happens. Thank you, Mr. Khan. Okay, next we will go to the Personnel Committee, myself, the chair. I'm going to begin with our retirement, C one, and we have one retirement, Diane O'Donnell, teacher at Bell Avenue. Ms. O'Donnell has been with the district since September twenty seventh, nineteen ninety nine. And as I always do, we want to wish Ms. O'Donnell, thank, many thanks, and wish her well for her retirement, and hopefully she will enjoy this time off, and she has put in many years with us, and again, we want to thank you for your time with us. C two, resignations. Excuse me. C three, appointments, and I just want to read through these so we can welcome those that are new to the district, Kim Govea, teacher at Pinewood High School, Chelsea Jones, teacher at Bell Avenue, Dinesha Lynch Matlak, Ninth Grade Academy, Anna Ortiz, instructional assistant at Pinewood Middle School. Anna Ortiz, instructional assistant at Pinewood Middle School, Michelle Ferrari, long-term sub at Alden. And we just want to welcome you all to the district. C five leaves of absence. C six mentors. C seven miscellaneous. I'm sorry, I'm trying to catch up with you. C eight. There are no tenure awards. C nine salary track changes, there are none. C ten, there are no miscellaneous personnel items. We do have additions to the agenda. And we would congratulate, like to congratulate Mr. Randy Carpenter, assistant principal at the Ninth Grade Academy. He is the reclassification of Ms. of Dr. Evans. Jean Cody, athletic manager. Change in assignment Veronica Richards, communications and market, marketing assistant. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
And I apologize for not asking last Tuesday, I forgot. May we know in broad strokes what the educational similarities are for Mr. Arrow and Ms. Mattwell?
Yep, I'll make a note of that. We'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Tell me what page that's on, please. I'd like to just.
Following online that they don't page them, but hold on. Just the education. Okay, no, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motions pass. Okay. Going next to our property committee, Mr. Jantall.
Thank you, Ms. Ivory. We have D one zoning design. This motion is to approve the design from K C B A from Pinewood High School to use at Nandtown zoning board hearing. D two athletic complex change order number seven. This motion is to approve change order seventh with the athletic complex for purchase and installation of requested signage. D three athletic complex change order number eight. The motion is to approve change order number eight, when planning complex and technology, security access control to better secure the site. D four is bond resolution. This is the recommended action is resolve the school board of directors of William Penn School District, Delaware County, Pennsylvania does hereby authorize the administration to work with P F M and financial advisors LLC as financial advisor Raymond James as underwriter in public offerings. Eckert, Siemens, Shirin and Mella LLC as bond counsel and suite Stephen Katz and Williams LLC as solicitor in conjunction with issuance of general bonds, the proceeds of which will be used to fund new cap, new money for capital projects in the approximate amount of nine million nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Timeline included. And finally, D five food service management company contract. Motion is to approve one year extension with the air mark contract. And motion to solicit request for proposal for food management company for the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Hey, do we have any questions or comments?
I just, what was the meeting where the architects did a piece about the high school? Was that your property meeting that I was?
Committee of the whole.
Last week, Tuesday?
Yes.
I just wanted to recommend for anyone that wants to know about the high school, there's an amazing presentation last Tuesday. What is that?
Media of the.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
The sixteenth that talks about the high school. It's a little automated. It's really cool. So if you want to know about the high school, just go watch the YouTube of our meeting. You can skip through the meeting part. It was fabulous. I thought it was really well done. So thank you very much.
D five is a motion in the alternative. So if someone does, presumably the person making the motion should.
Yeah, so then the motion is to approve one year extension of the air mark food service.
I also have a question.
Wait, 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 because it's hard to hear y'all. What are you doing for D five?
So Mr. Tong as the committee chair and the person who moves the whole committee report is, his motion in D five is the first one, motion to approve the one year extension of the Aramark Food Service Contract. That's his motion.
Okay, because that's what my question was. How do we have two motions on the, on the item? So, okay, so he wants to go for the first motion.
That's the motion on the floor.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And then, I'm sorry, Ms. Ivy, I cut you off and then I want to come back to my question.
Okay, no, I just had a question on D one for the zoning design. I just wanted to clarify, the zoning design has no impact on the actual classroom setup. This is just for the grounds for us to be approved to actually build on the property, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Footprint and all the things that go along with what that looks like, all the external components.
Okay, and I, and my next question to that, what, when will we know when there plans to be a visit for, I guess, the committee to visit other twenty-first century learning style schools so we can ensure that we are, our setup and design is in the current versus our traditional layout?
That's, that's upcoming. We have to talk to the architects to kind of solidify dates. Books are available.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Ivy, I still have two questions. So the one on D one regarding the zoning. I heard, I heard about blueprints. And first of all, forgive me for not attending Tuesday's meeting. I had to work till eight. So it is, along with the YouTube meeting, is that, that blueprint is available as well?
There is also a presentation posted with the agenda, I believe, if I'm mistaken. But I will make sure that it is available. Believe this could link to that.
Thank you. Okay, appreciate that and I'll look at that. And then, Ms. Ivy, if you don't mind, I'd like to go down to, Mr. Tong, really, because this is your report. Mr. Tong, I'd like to go down to D five, if you will. And that's regarding the food service management company contract. And your motion is to approve the one year extension of Aramark Food Services contract. I had questions about, so when I went to the, what was that, P S B A's conference, and I believe that was twenty twenty-two. When I came back with a report, I just asked if we could start getting biddings from other businesses that provides this, this service. I don't recall any other talks after me asking that. And then we get a email which was, I felt in my, on my, and I'm only can speak for me, I felt this was very last minute date given at the last minute, not giving us any information in a timely manner to be able to attend this taste testing. And I am aware that there is a board, I mean, I'm sorry, a committee rather. But I felt that the board should have been able to get timely notification so that we too may be able to not only taste test but to hear, excuse me for a minute. The presentation, excuse me, presentation that was given by these businesses, if we're going to be the ones who have to vote on it. I also want to state that since then, we have not gotten any updates to this taste testing. We don't know, at least I haven't seen any any updates on who did the taste testing, what did they feel, what was their, their results? What companies was used or who, who was a part of this taste testing? And then lastly, that would be it, that would be it. So again, we were asking for us to vote on it. But I personally can't vote on something I don't know anything about.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Some of those questions I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Kaufman to get together for me with our results.
Ms. Hopkins, so there, there was no taste test as of yet for this motion. So this motion or the selection of this motion is whether to just extend the current contract or it's to go out to R P again, in which case in that R P, we can include presentations, taste testings and things of that nature. So it's giving the board the option, but we have to make a decision to go through that process because it's a couple of months.
I did attend the Aramark event. I think Ms. Shanda was there. And I thought they answered the questions. I, I learned a lot. Let's just say I learned a lot. They really got into, I'll say, the nuts and bolts of what a meal has to contain. Why young people must take all parts of the meal. I thought it was super informative. I don't remember the timeframe, Ms. Hopkins, but you could be very well correct. But it was, it was a very useful use of my time, I'll say. I learned a lot and it was great to be with the parents.
So the contract was for?
So, so I think the, the two meetings are getting, so that's a, that is a meeting that will happen every year regardless of whether we're going out to R P. If we got to R P, then all, there would be additional companies that we could taste test and things like that. So that's where I think the, the two items are getting crossed, which is, you know, I was trying to convey.
And I think I may be the one who's probably confused and, and I will accept that as, as gospel that it could be me. But in, in the case, in that case, there's still the motion on the floor to approve the one year extension, but we haven't done any homework. And I only, I'm, and I can only speak for myself in the, what I had observed as our kids with food on their lap, sitting in a, in the auditorium and not having not even a paper tray or anything on their laps, they're using their books. I didn't, when I went to ask about it, you know, I got, I got a look of not even an answer. I don't know. And I think that's not fair to our children. I think the quality of foods that I saw, I was not happy with as well. And so I, I am going to vote no for the extension and for us to propose for a food service management company, maybe doing some bids and soliciting.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, so.
Ms. Ivory, I'm going to recommend that we sever D five. Move D one through four and vote on D five separately.
Great, thank you, Mr. Khan. Okay, so what we're going to do is eliminate D five, so we're voting D one through D four. So all those in favor of D one through D four only? All those in favor? Any against? Okay, motion passes for D one through B four. Now we're going to, Mr. Khan, if you can help us make a motion for D five, how will we read this one?
Well, it, the motion remains motion to approve the one year extension of the Aramark Food Service Contract. And folks can vote yes or no on that.
Okay, so we're going with the first one. Okay. All those in favor for the motion to approve the one year extension of the Aramark Food Service Contract? Are those against? Okay, I'm not sure if the motion passed.
It did.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to continue to our budget and finance committee agenda. Ms. Jennifer Hoff.
Thank you, Ms. Ivory. Sorry. E one treasurer's report. E two list of bills. Thank you. I just want to add, all school board directors can have up to two people for the budget advisory committee. Please get us your names. I think we're ready to Mr. Captain. Sooner than later, our next meeting is February. February twenty-second. Yes, absolutely. Yeah. Aaron is fair. All are welcome. And if any school board directors have any questions about the meeting we had last Thursday, please let me know. And as a matter of course, I'll send out the presentation from last Thursday. Thank you so much. Going to be a good budget here.
All right, I was just going to ask one question. Is there any way we could put anything out in, say, the Wednesday folders for the, for the parents at the school? So that way we could also try and to recruit Dr. B Coats, is that possible?
Or parent square.
Yeah, or parent, or parent square.
I think it is possible. I will follow up. Jennifer, yeah, all right, I'll follow up.
Great, thank you. Or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any against? No. Okay, we're going to continue to our policy committee, Ms. Joanna Hopkins.
There's no report.
Right, thank you very much, Ms. Hopkins. Okay, going to our next set of reports, Delaware County Community College, Mr. Robert E.
The solicitor.
Oh, I apologize.
No, quite all right. I forget about me all the time, too. We did, the board had an executive session on January the tenth to discuss the fair funding litigation. And I'm sure Dr. B Coats has already put out to the public, but the report of the Basic Education Funding Commission is available. So anyone who is interested can read their recommendations to Harrisburg regarding funding. And, and also, Ms. Ivory, I just want to comment that it is very hard to chair a meeting remotely and, and nice job on the action part.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. All right, we're going to continue with our reports, Mr. Wright for Delaware County Community College.
Thank you, Ms. Ivory. Delaware County Community College trustee in vacancy to complete a six-year underspired term ending June the third of twenty twenty-nine. Delaware County Community College candidate for the vacancy on the board of trustees possessed involvement and understanding of our community and its educational and employment needs. Enthusiasm for mission of community colleges and willingness to commit time for the board meetings, committee meeting, planning sessions and special events. A strong ability to be a team player who works well in a group, an ability to listen thoroughly to other points of views and bring wise judgment to complex matters. I desire to be an ambassador for the. A desire to be an ambassador for the college within their community. Advocate for this volunteer must resign in one of the college sponsoring schools, which is twelve. Sponsoring schools, Chester Upland School District, Garden Valley, Havreford, Innenboro, Radnor, Ridley, Rose Tree Media, Southeast Belko, Springfield. Upper Darby, Waldorf Swafmore, and William Penn. Please note the current sitting school board members, officers, solicitors from the above districts are not eligible to apply. For applicants, for application material or information, please contact the president of office. Uh, six, ten, three, fifty-nine, fifty-two, fifty-two, eighty-eight, or president at D C C Educational. Resident Bethfield Township and resident Swafmore, Swafmore is the only resident from the uh, from Garden Valley. Uh, Shirley Hunt is our, oh, year four. If you call, I'll give you her name, it's Diane. Diane would be the person that you will contact, and she's very thorough. Uh, Shirley Hunt is chair of the liaison committee. D C Board of Trustees, we plan to complete this process according to the following schedule. January the twentieth, the fourth, school board president of liaison committee of vacancies and proceeds of filling out. January twenty-fourth, please notices advertisement media outlets and on the college website. January, February twenty twenty-four, liaison committee members announce vacancy at school board meeting. March twentieth, twenty-fourth, completed distributed candidates and application to liaison committee. March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, liaison committee discuss application, compile a short list for the committee to interview. March twenty twenty-fourth, scheduled committee interviews of candidates, recommended candidates for sponsoring school board to vote on. And sponsoring school board vote on the candidates. The application deadline is February the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. I have made some additional app- applications, anyone like to have copies, you can see me at the end of the meeting. Are there any questions?
Keep on constructing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, so much for that report. All right, next we're gonna go to Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Ms. Joanna Hopkins.
Ms. Ivory, if you don't mind, I wanna go back to the Delaware County Community College report. And if my memory serves me correctly, we talked about how. And I don't recall what meeting, so y'all gonna have to forgive me, but I do remember we talked about how we were gonna do outreach and how we were gonna do. Um, uh, fo- for um. The. Um, sorry, I'm drawing a blank on what I'm trying to say. Dual enrollment, that's it. Uh, we talked about doing, uh, and, and I believe it was Mr. Wright and Ms. um Valerie Cook Henry. Were um charged to do this outreach. I wanted to know what kind of. Um, and since we had that meeting with D C C C, um, and they did their presentation. And it seemed like our numbers were really low, so I wanted to get some feedback as to what are we doing as for, to get our numbers up so that. Um, William Penn can look, look um good that we are really doing dual enrollment for D C C C.
You asking for a, uh, answer to respond to that?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right, well, we probably, the first thing we would probably, we'd probably meet with our principal at Winpin High School. And also meet with the principal of the high school, we meet with the counselors, and from there, we would probably set up a. Uh, a joint meeting with Delaware County Community College, like they did it in the past, and come out and make a presentation to the students. And then we move, go from there. But the key to make this successful definitely relies on support of our counselors. So once we have that kind of support, the numbers would be, would uh, would definitely be up. And like I said, in the past, we were, we pretty much was number one. In Delaware County as far as how many students that we sent. We also have articulation program that would, that also. Our students can go to Delaware County Community College and then articulate to other universities where they could receive scholarships, so that presentation. Uh, I did hand out some, I brought some handouts to the principal. That he could distribute to some of the counselors, and I'd be more than willing to do that. And I think I had talked to Ms. Valerie Cook Henry that we would probably put the principal together because the key to this process is the counselors. So if there's any other question, I'd be more than glad to. And, and anybody have any idea, but it has been very successful.
Right, and I, I have to agree with you, Mr. Wright, that, you know, under your leadership, that this really was. You know, for us, we were like really number one, and I, I was surprised to see the numbers on their presentation. So now my next question to you is, what's the deadline, one, to meet with the principals? What's the deadlines to meet with the counselor, and when will the presentation will be completed? Since we're now in what, you know, sma- uh, colleges end in May, so. And then um, high schools end in June, and we're now in January getting ready, cross over the bridge to February. So when can we um expect to have these meetings?
I say, like I said, my first meeting would probably be with the principal, then we'll go from there, we'll get back to you. And you know what the deadline, like I just presented the deadline for the vacancy, so we'll have a deadline. Uh, you know, coming back from the principal that we definitely have to, again, distress. The information to make this program successful, it was with the support of our council. So it would not be a problem once we get started and get everybody involved.
Yeah, and that, that's why I was asking, when can we get a deadline, because again, you know, colleges end in May and. And then the, the kids move on in, in June, so I, I was looking to see if we could get a deadline or some kind of date.
As I already said, I said we would be with the president, the person to become to the deadline that would coincide with the, so have everybody come out to Delaware County. You know, come out to Winpin School District like we did in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Welcome.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, we're gonna continue to our. Delaware County Intermediate Report by Ms. Joanna Hopkins.
I don't have any report, Ms. what, uh, Ms. Ivory.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Okay, continuing to Delaware County Legislative Council, Ms. Jennifer Hoff?
Thank you, Ms. Ivory. Um, very exciting time to the Legislative Council. Uh, the budget is passed, so we're all happy about that. That's the two thousand three budget. Uh, we're made three.
Not two thousand three, they're bad, but they're not that bad.
Twenty twenty-three, um, and we're having conversations on, had to listen to the new governor's budget in a few weeks. Um, which is very exciting also. Something that might help uh our dual enrollment. Is uh Act fifty-two, which the governor signed on December thirteenth. That would allow public schools to give credits for I. Uh, high school students that take college credits as high school. So I'm sure it'll provide a little nightmare for power school, but uh in the past, we have not been able to do that. So that should be a very uh great situation for our young people to get credits. Towards their high school for those college classes also. Um, and the other uh um conversation was H P fifteen oh seven. Where we talked about flexible instruction time in school with Ms. Seward, when we were talking about the calendar. It now used to say, um, we used to say a hundred and eighty days and nine hundred and nine hundred and ninety hours. And now it says four, which is one of those shell or whatevers. Uh, so that's exciting. Um, there is a bill SB three seventy-five. That would mandate A E Ds at all athletic events, so I think we're out of the curve there. And just a reminder to school board directors that we're just elected in November. You have, it's a twenty twenty-four to do, since we're all reelected, your three hours of training. So you can go in person or you can just do it online, so please do that and get us a little more. That's all for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Hoff, for that update and a reminder. We're newly elected reports, okay? All right, so we are going to go, there is no old business. We do not have any new business listed as well. We will now go to public comments on non-agenda items.
We have, Ms. Machenda has her hand raised, Ms. Ivory.
Please come up to the podium.
Is there any way we can find another way to get in touch with parents? I know the date is at eighty day, and there were so many kids that I had to say. I don't think they're all getting Parents Square. And also, I know this issue, why do we have a dress code at the middle school and it's not being enforced at all?
So in reference to Parents Square, we spent a lot of time about a year ago. Um, looking at all of our communication systems that we have in this district, and at the time, we had several of them. And this committee decided that we wanted to have one communication device. Um, that we would use as a district Parents Square is what was selected. Uh, we did go through a process of asking families and telling families to sign up so that they can get notifications. Uh, and so I'm gonna continue to encourage families to sign up. It's pretty simple. Most of us have. These lovely devices, put the app right on your phone, it will come to your phone. So that's what I'm gonna ask you to do, since you are a part of various. Hold on, does that be finished? I'm gonna ask you to help us, right, by sharing that message with families, because that's what we need to. Uh, and that would, I think. Extend how many more people are getting it. We do look at the, also we can look at the, the contact rate. And I believe it's over about ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of the phone numbers that we do have in the system, so we are reaching families. But once we get the numbers, it's a system that definitely has proven thus far to work pretty well. Um, but we will keep pushing that, and we can put some more things out to have families get connected to Parents Square. Because that is the district's main mode of communication.
Yeah, but about the, we had the dress code, I know it's, it's posted, but they're not enforcing it. And when I went to talk to the principal after the former school meeting, her thing was there's more than. And it's me, they're like, well, we enforce the dress code, she doesn't back that, so I, I, I just feel like I'm struggling a little bit. Like, one side say one thing, the other, like, I don't, I don't know. But I know my child, he don't have it, he's, when I'm getting a phone, a text, email, and I just think it's unfair, like, if you want to have a dress code, we need you penalize me. Like, some consequences need to be in place, like, everybody needs to, you know, work with them, what we need to just, keep away with that in the middle.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Hoff, no, I'll say something.
Thank you, Dr. McCoates. Um, tonight, could we do a flyer in the Wednesday packets? To remind parents about Parent, Parents Square, maybe just like a, another promotional sort of week on Parents Square.
Yeah.
And then ask the principal, because the, the principals at the middle school and the high school could do just a, a straight blast. To the parents or to the students.
No problem.
Just like a, a second wing. I would also be curious how many um. People have signed up for Parents Square under the, whatever. So we have a page mark to see where we're going.
I also think that parents more than realize change numbers often. So need to be reminded that if they change their number, they should reconnect with parents. Because that's an issue.
All right, all those comments have been noted. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. We will follow up accordingly and advise you on the actions that we take.
Use some answers.
We do.
Yeah, Ms. Morehead?
Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
Um, I saw that the Bas- Basic Education Funding Commission released their report. And I'm just interested to know, my, my understanding, I, I don't know if I'm wrong, is that that is the recommendation, but it hasn't yet been funded. And we don't yet know if we're going to receive that money in the budget. I'm just interested to know, uh, as a parent, what I can be doing to advocate for us to get that money. Should I be calling? The governor's office, who should I be contacting?
So you are correct, it was, it is a recommendation. The governor is uh preparing a report. For his budget on February the sixth. We need to play, pay close attention to what the governor is recommending to determine if it is a variance. From what the commission recommended. If it is, I am sure that we will be galvanizing. I have shared with board members, I shared with staff today. We need to galvanize, we need to speak up. It is unacceptable, in my opinion, for us to have to continue to wait. We've waited long enough. So there will be an effort, and I will be the main person out there beating the pavement to make, to give us what we deserve. And so I, I thank you for calling, asking what to do. Let's wait until February the sixth. I already know that there are some advocates who will be advocating on our behalf. And we will probably, most likely have parents as a part of that uh advocacy group as well. And so, Ms. Morehead, I know how to get in contact with you, and we will be reaching out to you.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Morehead. We have Ms. Commodore, I believe, has her hand raised, Dr. B Coats?
Yes.
Hello, um, I'm asking about a, a, a follow-up about my. Question I had asked last month in the board meeting about the stipend positions. That were at Pinwood Middle School with the after-school care and Saturday school, where the um IAs were. In the system to be paid for fifteen dollars an hour instead of the normal stipend pay of thirty dollars an hour. And I, I haven't heard anything about that.
Chrissy is coming, this doctor is coming to um the podium. Just make sure the mic is on, it's on range.
Good evening, Ms. Commodore. Hi. That had been corrected, and I thought that I had communicated that. But those um rates were corrected. It was a error, and they were corrected.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Ivory, Ms. Plum has her hand up.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Ms. Plum, thank you for waiting.
Yeah, thank you. Um, quick question. I, there was an incident that happened at Ardmore. I believe it was December twenty-first, um, with, I think it was a student had a weapon and a picture was sent. Um, and I was told that there was an emergency communication protocol. But I have been unable to find that, and I was wondering if somebody could help me figure out where, where I can find that.
The emergency communication protocol is an internal process that we use. Um, but we can make sure that you have knowledge of its contents.
That would, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. That looks like, I do not see any other hands raised.
Uh, Ms. Machenda?
The bathroom, the girl bathroom at the middle school, they wanna fix the lock anytime soon. The stalls don't lock, and the heat is introduced.
Um, I will follow up about the stalls, not locking, it's the first I've heard about it, but um.
And Ms. Dean, Ms. here, I know he explained to the staff today when we met at the middle school this morning. Uh, about the heat. I don't know if you can unmute yourself, Ms. Dean, and if you would like to share that information. You may not be able to unmute. The bottom line is it is something that's being worked on. Uh, there's a, there's an issue at the top of. The unit on top of the roof, and we were there this morning in a meeting and it spoke. Um, so I, I understand it, I experienced it firsthand myself. Um, and so it was something that they're working on. Uh, it's almost like you're putting a band-aid on it unfortunately, but it is something that we're working on as well as other rooms. As well as other rooms in the school as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Ms. Ivory, I think that concludes the comment, I don't see any other hands inside and no other hands on the.
You're correct, okay, thank you, Dr. B Coats. Okay, we're gonna have the announcements of our future meetings. Our upcoming meetings, our Personnel Committee meeting of the Board of School Directors will be held via Zoom at six thirty on Tuesday, January thirtieth. A Property Committee meeting will be held via Zoom, six thirty on Tuesday, February sixth. Our Policy Committee meeting will be held via Zoom at six thirty PM on Thursday, February eighth. And our next committee meeting of the whole will be held at six thirty on Tuesday, February twentieth in the Administration Building Boardroom. And our Education meeting will be held via Zoom, six thirty on Wednesday, February twenty-first. Our Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be held via Zoom, six thirty on Thursday, February twenty-second. And our next business meeting of the Board of School Directors will be held at six thirty on Monday, February twenty-six in the Administration Building Boardroom and also via Zoom. And that is the announcements for our future meetings, please participate and join in. If you cannot be in person for our business and committee meetings, please log in via Zoom as well as our committees. And I call this meeting for adjournment. Thank you, everyone, have a wonderful evening, be safe out there and get home safe this evening.